They are approved, department heads and committees. Chief King, do you have anything for us?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. This is a copy of the photos and DVD.
Thank you, Chief.
Watcher Street thing on Memorial Day.
That'll be great for the historical.
It will be. And as, oh, he's a good chief. He's got them labeled and everything. It's fantastic.
Oh, wow. And then on the last page is the DVD which has all of those pictures on it.
Good. Chief, I like page eight. I like page eight, Chief. It's all me.
That was just the way they came up.
Yeah. Chief, thanks again for everything you did on that ceremony. I know I've heard a lot of positive feedback from that.
Oh, yeah.
It was absolutely wonderful.
The credit goes to you for putting it on.
Because that's a day which could have gone one way or the other.
Absolutely. Is that our copy, Chief, or? Selectmen's copy or historical?
Whatever the board wants to do, I can make up another one if you want.
Do we want to just forward it on to the historical committee?
I would say. Oh, that's too much.
Yeah. Page eight. Great.
It is page eight. That's excellent.
Great. We will definitely, Randy, pass it on to the historical committee.
I did, I did forward a copy of that book to General Noah.
Oh, nice.
For whatever they.
I'm sure he'll appreciate, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, that's how we get things done, Chief, public relations.
That's what I, when the captain was at the Route forty-four bridge, he was going hand-delivered to the general.
Ah.
So I saved the postage. I don't have to pay for the postage.
Always checking.
It was good if you had lent it to the major.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, seeing no other department heads or committees, we have two appointments tonight. We have an appoint, reappointment for Constable for David De Senzo, and it's approved by the Chief.
And I approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
That is reapproved. And the second one is to appoint an acting town accountant to fill the vacancy until we have a finalist or finalists for the permanent position.
Are we, are we naming Eric?
Yeah, Kizner.
Kincher.
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 Eric, I nominate Eric Kitchener, Certified Public Accountant from the firm of Eric Kitchener.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just so the public is aware, I've asked Mrs. Smith to head up the search for a permanent full-time town accountant to fill the vacancy that was created by the resignation of our previous accountant, and I believe Mrs. Smith is starting that process this week.
Yes, Thursday evening.
Okay, and so in the next few weeks, we'll be keeping the public updated on that process. So this is just an acting town accountant. We have some public hearings, but we have to wait five minutes to start that. Any new business tonight, Mr. McKinnon?
Huge man.
Any new business?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Smith?
No, sir.
All business?
No, sir.
Mrs. Smith?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, the only thing under all business is we have to approve the redistricting plan. We need to return a certified copy of the vote, official legal description for precinct and ward, where applicable, official block listing and approved map. And Mr. Buckner, this will meet your approval.
Yes, it does.
Okay, what is the board's pleasure?
I approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved and can be passed along to the secretary's office. Town and ministries report, Mr. Buckner.
Just a reminder, the board is off next week and every other week until Labor Day under its summer schedule. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, we are, excuse me, conducting our search for a new town accountant, and we have initial interviews on Thursday evening. And reprecincting, we've already done. My understanding is that the new precincts do not have to be in effect until September two thousand twelve primaries. Household has its waste day for Rehnham residents is this Saturday, June eighteenth, from eight AM to twelve noon. There's a flyer on the Highway Department's page on the town's website listing what can and cannot be brought, and it hasn't changed from years past. It's the same. It's been the same for about fifteen years. But you can view that, and you can get copies at the Highway Department or Town Hall. And that's this Saturday, June eighteenth. Don't be late. The gates will close at noon time. The other upcoming event, I guess we'll call it a special election on the debt exclusion, the nine million dollar debt exclusion for completion of the Rehnham sewer system. And that will be Saturday, June twenty-fifth, and the polls will be open from ten AM to eight PM. And there will be, if not already, there will be absentee ballots available in the town clerk's office. And if successful, that debt exclusion will fund the construction of sewers in south of Rehnham. One other note, municipal health insurance bill has gone to conference committee with members of the House and Senate. We're hoping for a resolution here within a few weeks. Upcoming, I have a department headed meeting this Thursday at ten AM, and our tour of the south school, north school, and Gilmore Hall will take place Monday, June twentieth, at one PM. We have an entourage come to inspect the buildings and sort of decide, look at the shape they're in and what uses we might put them to.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
No, sir.
We still have four minutes before I can take up the hearing. Mr. McKinnon, do you want to start up your historical report?
Sure, I'll start out a little bit of it, Mr. Chairman. I met this afternoon for what's called a regional communication study, which is being done in the southeastern part of Massachusetts to coordinate, regionalize all of the dispatcher units. It was very well presented by professionals. It's operating under a grant. There's no money to it. They're talking about nineteen different communities being members of that. To be quite candid, Mr. Chairman, it was probably, one might say, less than pleasant, the meeting with the various town dispatches that were there that didn't have an awful lot of faith in the positive nature of that regional communication center for the town of Rehnham. But if they're going to meet for five years, they've got a lot of work to do before they put a final report in, so maybe it'll go a little different as time goes by. I myself also was not impressed with that nineteen different communities because traditionally, when we get involved in regionalization, the larger communities seem to survive, survive, and the smaller communities seem to just be sort of there, if you will. So I'll sum up that part of my presentation, if I may, Mr. Chairman, by saying that we thank them very much for coming in. I look forward to them coming back in the future. They seem like very nice people and good to their mother, I'm sure, but it didn't go well.
Thank you. That was perfect timing.
Yes.
We have three public hearings today. I'm just going to go over the ground rules for everybody because it looks like everybody's in the audience. In typical fashion, we'll go to the applicants first, and then we go to the public for any comment, pro or con, and then I open it up to the board for questions and comments. When you address the board, if you can attend the podium, speak into the microphone so those listening at home and watching at home can hear you. The microphone is not for us, but again, it's for the TV audience because we are live, and if you could give your name, address, and applicable title associated with why you're speaking to us tonight, that would be greatly appreciated. That goes to the minutes, and again, people speaking at home. If you have any questions, you can direct them to me, and I'll direct them to the board from that route. And with that, we'll start the first of the public hearings, which is for the all-alcohol licenses to applicants at Courtyard by Marriott, thirty-seven Paramount Drive, and Occasions at Village South, four seventy-three South Street West. The first on the agenda is Occasions at Village South, Christine Kelly, the Board of Selectmen, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June fourteen, at seven ten PM at the Veterans Memorial Town Hall, five five eight South Main Street, Rehnham, on the application of Occasions at Village South LLC, Christine Kelly, manager for an all-alcoholic beverage license at four seventy-three South Street West. All interested parties will be here at that time, and that is by the Board of Selectmen. I will submit to the board for consideration a letter from Chief Donovan of the Police Department. As requested by the board, the Rehnham Police Department records over the last three years do not list any liquor law violations nor any disturbances related to the serving of alcohol at Occasions located in Village South Plaza, four seventy-three South Street West. Mr. Buckner, the application is all in? Okay. Ms. Kelly, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Hi, I'm Christine Kelly, one eighty-five Bucknell Road in Rehnham, Mass. I am the manager and the managing member of the LLC. I've been in business at that location since two thousand and three. There's actually been a license at that location since nineteen ninety-four. I took over in September of two thousand and three, and there was a beer and wine license at the time. For the first four years approximately that I was in business, it was not flourishing or developing, so I approached the town to get a cordials and lakers license, which in August of two thousand and seven, that actually transpired. From that point until now, my business has grown thirty percent, essentially just because of my ability to offer more beverages to my, the people that rent my hall. And a lot of times, people will approach me to rent the facility, and because of my limitations in what I can provide, I either have to denigrate the value of the room or sometimes even give it away just to get the person to actually come to the facility and hold their event. So I think that if I had an all-alcohol license, I not only would grow my business, but I think it would allow me to, to get the full rental value for the room as well as make more money, because that's essentially my only, my only revenue stream is the beverage service that I provide. I don't provide any linens, no catering. It's just the room rental and the beverages.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here to speak in association with your application?
Um, I don't know. The landlord is here, if you want.
Mr. Mann?
Jeffrey Mann, ninety-three South Bay Road in Osterville, Massachusetts. I'm the property owner of which Occasions is, is run. I would speak in favor of the granting of an all-alcohol license. I have watched the struggling growth of Occasions over the last six to eight years, and there have been many occasions where, occasions, where Occasions cannot meet the needs of the general public because it has not been able to provide an all-alcoholic venue for those, and there's probably lost somewhere between twenty-five to thirty percent of the available business that could have been provided to it. There have been no issues with, with the venue at all. It's well-run, it's clean, and I think it's very well-respected, and we are strongly in favor of the granting of an all-alcoholic beverage license.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public to speak in favor of the applicant? Is there anybody from the public to speak against the applicant? Seeing neither to the board, Mr. McKinnon?
No, because you've been in operation for such a period of time and always operating in a very professional manner. I thank you for that, for the town.
Mrs. Smith?
I'd just like to know approximately how many functions you do have there.
I, actually, since I got the cordial and liquor permit, I've increased where I provide beverage service, two to three a week. So essentially Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then during the week, I do, you know, hall rentals for various things, but two to three a week.
So it's pretty active at this point?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Kelly from the board?
Not for me.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Part B of the all-alcohol license application is the Courtyard by Marriott. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June fourteen, at seven ten PM, Veterans Memorial Town Hall, five five eight South Main Street, Rehnham, on the application of HJ Rehnham Hotel Incorporated DBA Courtyard by Marriott. Beth Scherer, manager for an all-alcoholic beverage in holder's license at thirty-seven Paramount Drive, Rehnham. Is it Scherer?
Scherer.
Scherer, okay, I was close. If you'd like to come up and start your presentation?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Beth Scherer, and my address is three eight zero Mohawk Road in Rehnham. And I am the vice president of Jaten Hotel Management, which owns and operates the property, which we are here seeking an all-alcoholic beverage license for, and I'm also the manager on the current beer and wine license that we hold.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Mason, Nine Adams Street, number eleven, southeast in Massachusetts, and I'm the general manager of the hotel.
We had prepared a PowerPoint presentation for the evening, but from what I understand, the room, the, just won't work out for us, so I'm not sure how you want me to do this.
There's a, a side table on wheels over there.
Okay.
If you'd like to borrow that and we just set it up here, you're welcome to do that.
Because there's some numbers on here that we'd like you to be able to see, so.
If this is going to face us, is it?
Yes.
Then I would, I would say anyone in the audience who wishes to stand behind us to watch this presentation is welcome.
We'll indulge.
We had followed and told them.
Sure. I just don't want.
No, it's okay.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that.
Right. I, no, I completely agree. Well, as, as many of you know, the Courtyard by Marriott opened in nineteen ninety-nine with ninety-nine guest rooms and three meeting rooms, and at the time, we operated with a seasonal beer and wine license. In two thousand and three, we were able to obtain a year-round beer and wine license, which helped us tremendously because it was hard to explain to the thousands of Johnson and Johnson. It was hard for us to explain to the thousands of Johnson and Johnson guests why they could drink beer in May, but not in January, so. It was very helpful when we were able to go for a full beer and wine license. In two thousand and six, we renovated the hotel. We added twenty-one guest rooms and three additional meeting rooms due to increased demand. So we just did like a quick calculation. Our hotel's been open for business four thousand three hundred and eighty days. Our business doesn't close, which we feel is important when going for this license, that we have the ability to bring in our, you know, alcohol revenue on a daily basis. Bringing you up to speed on where we are in the present, in two thousand and ten, we sold twenty-nine thousand twenty-nine rooms. That translates to a minimum of twenty-nine thousand twenty-nine guests in the area if you're only counting one person per room. These members that are visiting the community are spending money in the community, not just at our hotel, but at other local businesses in Rehnham, thus generating more money, tax money for the town of Rehnham. When we looked at the breakdown of our guests, we're looking at about a seventy percent mix of business travelers and a thirty percent mix for leisure, leisure travelers, excuse me. Again, our business travelers are staying with us and spending money in the community each evening to eat dinner, each afternoon to eat lunch. What we're trying to do is harness the dinner option and keep that within the hotel, and we'll get to that when we get to the future. The hotel itself, we have a very, very strong community involvement. Our vice president of the company lives in the town of Rehnham, so she easily identifies opportunities for the hotel to support key initiatives within the community, whether that be donate hotel rooms to organizations in Rehnham that are in need of hosting and out of, someone who's coming from out of town, or sponsoring a baseball team. We do that each year. Again, the hotel is operating twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We've never closed since the day we opened. That gives us three hundred and sixty-five days to grow our business and sell our business each and every day. We are the host hotel for Johnson and Johnson and the Depew Institute, which are located on Paramount Drive as well. In two thousand and ten, we did eight thousand room nights for just that one organization alone. And the average stay, which we feel is very important for a J and J guest, is four or more nights. And that translates to four opportunities to capture food and beverage revenue and tax money for the town of Rehnham each week. We took a little, a little log off of one of Marriott's websites because I think I should back up a little bit and just explain to the board that we presently only serve breakfast at the hotel. And then in the evening, we have the beer and wine license, which is more of just a lounge experience for the guests. So Marriott is rolling out a new courtyard refreshing business concept, and we'll show you a few photographs and what that entails in a minute. But basically, we'll be serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner to our guests. So with this new, what they call the bistro concept, Marriott has put together, and I've brought some menus to share with all of you so that you can see what, what Marriott has put together. And probably half of the eight hundred and fifty Marriotts in the U.S. presently have the bistro and are serving beer, wine, and alcohol. And this is just a copy of the menu as well as what drinks Marriott is proposing that we offer our guests. So one of the main reasons why Marriott decided to go this route is because of what the guests are looking for and what the customer is looking for. And this is what one of the customers had to say. "To be honest, I have stopped staying at Courtyard. When traveling for business, I am looking for a hotel that has more options, especially one that has more of a full-service restaurant and bar. Your competitors seem to better understand what your customers really want." And so we just took a minute to note who those competitors are in this market, that because of the fact that we don't serve alcohol, we do lose business. You know, there are, believe it or not, some Johnson and Johnson guests, even though we're right down the street, that will go stay at the Holiday Inn in Taunton once it's renovated again, because right now, nobody's really staying there. The Renaissance in Foxborough has a contract with Johnson and Johnson. The Courtyard by Marriott in Stoughton, which has just undergone this new refreshing business renovation, and the Holiday Inn in Mansfield. So we just think it's really important that we try to keep as many customers in Rehnham as we can, and not offering a full alcoholic, alcohol menu with this new menu really will drive down business, we feel, so. Here are some photographs, which I know are kind of hard for you to see, but we can pass this around afterwards. But this is what, if any of you have been in our hotel, this is what it will look like. We plan to start renovations in November. So again, Beth has basically touched on where the future of our business is going, where the future of Marriott is going, where the future of Courtyard is going. In fall two thousand and eleven, we are going to begin our courtyard refreshing business renovation, and with that comes the requirement to have a dinner option. And with that dinner option, Marriott does require, if you're able to get the licensing in your town, to serve the full bar menu. And you can see, we did pass out the options for beverages that will be served required by Marriott. Marriott did this change and designed it in order to give travelers the flexibility to work and socialize however they choose while on the road. With our business being seventy percent corporate guests, we, we feel that this is a huge change for us and a very important change if we're going to continue to grow as a business. The next piece just touches on dining, and Marriott says dining has been completely redesigned with the bistro. Eat, drink, connect, offering casual, flexible seating, easier access to food, and higher-quality, healthier menu options for breakfast and light evening fare, including snacks, wine, beer, and signature cocktails so guests can unwind. We pulled this slide from a Marriott, from some Marriott data that was formed for the first quarter of two thousand and eleven. And basically Marriott has taken the statistics from the four hundred or so courtyards that have been through the refreshing business concept, and it just breaks down what the, what the sales have been that show you that the customer is taking advantage of the spirit, spirits that the new courtyards have to offer. Thirty-six percent of the customers are drinking beer, thirty-three percent are drinking wine, and thirty-one percent are taking advantage of the new spirit menu. Here's a photograph that I think you can see a little bit better, and this is what the, the bar area will look like. But keep in mind, we have a big lobby with lots of different seating components to it, but this is just a small picture of how the bar will look. So the, the previous slide that showed thirty-one percent of the sales is going towards spirit is really striking for us because if we're not able to get an all-alcoholic license, we're not going to be able to meet thirty-one percent of the guests' need, and that's really, really alarming to us. Marriott has pulled data for all courtyards for two thousand and eleven, year-to-date brand performance thus far. And what they have seen with the bistro and with the courtyard refreshing business concept is an increase in occupancy of two point two percentage points and with ADR, two point eight percentage points. So not only are we looking to be able to just serve beer, wine, and spirits, but we're also looking to increase our business as a whole due to the new concept, and the concept will, will not be complete without an all-alcoholic license. And just so you understand, the acronym ADR stands for Average Daily Rate, which is, you know, you take the revenue that we've sold in that day and divide it by the number of rooms that we've sold, so. So we just wanted to end with, we put some numbers together of what we feel the tax revenue generated will be with this all-alcoholic beverage license. These numbers at the top here are per occupied room. So for every room that we sell, we are presently bringing in five dollars and five cents in food revenue. With the new bistro concept based on Marriott's research that they've done, we'll be bringing in eight dollars and eighty-seven cents per occupied room. That brings us to our two thousand and ten totals. We brought in a hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars in food sales last year. With the new bistro concept, we'll bring in two, two hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. So basically, with our increase in occupancy and our increase in the number of guests that want to take advantage of what we have to offer, we'll generate that much more revenue. Presently, we're at the point seven five percent meals tax that goes back to the town of Rehnham. That, that comes out to about four cents per occupied room, which I know doesn't sound like much, but you times that by twenty-nine thousand twenty-nine rooms, and you come up with a pretty significant number. With the increase in the guests, with the guests taking advantage of the new concept, that number will go up to point oh seven per occupied room. So last year in meals tax, we paid one thousand forty-six dollars. This year in meals, with the new refreshing business concept, we'll pay one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars in meals tax. With the increase in occupancy, the occupancy tax will raise from six dollars and seventeen cents per occupied room to six dollars and thirty-eight cents per occupied room, which is a total of, we paid one hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars in occupancy tax in two thousand and ten. With the new bistro concept with a full alcohol license, we will generate one thousand eight hun, one, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, which, and this, these numbers are very, you know, conservative because we know now that we're losing a significant amount of Johnson and Johnson business to the Renaissance because we don't have this to offer. And we did invite our contacts at Johnson and Johnson to be at this meeting this evening, and unfortunately, they're all traveling on business this week. So we're looking at a very conservative number of ten thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars to be brought into the town of Rehnham with the two point two percent expected increase in occupancy and the two point eight percent increase in average daily rate. So, any questions that we can answer?
You could give a presentation?
Yes, uh-huh.
Is there anybody in the audience here to speak in favor of the applicant? Anybody opposed to the applicant? Seeing neither to the board for questions or comments, and actually, my mic first. The same letter we had for Occasions, we have from the chief for you stating that the past four years there have been no liquor law violations or disturbances under property. To the board, Mr. McKinnon?
No, we'll, we'll have to analyze the two proposals, Mr. Chairman, because both businesses are operating reputably, both are reputable. Generally speaking, what happens is usually businesses manage a transaction prior to coming before the board. This is one of the few times in recent years that we've actually had an open hearing from a, a business that we had to take the license back. It's the first time we've done that in many, many years, so, so that is why I think we have two such reputable businesses here before us. And I thank you very much both for all you've done.
And we didn't, we didn't print this out because we thought it would be on a larger scale, but we can certainly drop a copy of this off tomorrow for each of you so that you can have the opportunity to look at the numbers in more detail.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, definitely.
The first question I have is, this new bistro effect is going to be within the confines of what you already have existed, or are you going to be expanding in any way?
We won't be expanding, however, we will be spending about seven hundred thousand dollars on this renovation in the current space.
Okay. And this bistro, would it also just be open to the public also, or just for the residents, the people who are coming and staying?
Oh, no, it's open to the public, and Marriott would like the public to know that we will proudly be brewing Starbucks coffee.
I don't know, you might be in a Dunkin' town.
I know, but you know, those, those corporate guests that are from all over America that stay with us love their Starbucks, so.
Really?
Oh, yes.
Wow, that's interesting. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for your questions.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
You answered one of them seven hundred thousand with your construction cost. Do you have a timetable for construction? I know you said November. Any idea how long?
The construction is only anticipated.
The construction is only anticipated.
Sure.
Most of these, most of these projects have taken six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks, and you'll be open, fully functional during that?
Absolutely.
Okay. The only other question I have for you, I believe at this time, is I've always advocated quite strongly, and we've gone to the point where if you get a TIF, and this is not on the table, but if you got a TIF, local construction jobs get first priority, all things being equal.
Absolutely. When we built the hotel, we used all local.
Yes, yeah.
We used a foreman from New Hampshire, but all the work, all the contractors were all local contractors.
And if my suggestion to you, it appears from comments from Mr. McKenna that he's probably going to look to take this under advisement, was that correct?
I would say that would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, for one week, oh, for two weeks.
For two weeks, because we don't, yeah, we don't come back. If you'd like to turn those in, you can, because you did present it to us during the original hearing, so if you'd like to submit a hard copy of that, you're welcome to do that. Any other questions for either of the applicants?
I do not.
Okay.
So move that each applicant will be taken under advisement for two weeks, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We will see you back. If you'd like to join us on the 28th of June, at that point, we'll have a determination on who will be awarded the license for both of them.
It isn't necessary, you can, but nonetheless.
Yeah, it's optional if you'd like to see us again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, all for coming in, appreciate it.
Okay. The next one on the agenda we have is the transfer of locations for Rehnham Wine and Spirits. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 14th at 7:20 PM at Veterans Memorial Town Hall, 558 South Main Street, Rehnham, Mass. On the application of DeBukas Wine and Liquors Incorporated, DBA, Rehnham Wine and Liquors, 421 Route 44, for a change of location to 600 South Street West. All interested parties will be heard at this time. Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Sir?
Hi, my name is Buddy Kopp. My address is 20 Robert F. Shelter Road, North Attleboro, Massachusetts. I'm the president of DeBukas Wine and Liquors, DBA Rehnham Wine and Liquors, and first of all, I appreciate the board taking the time to consider the transfer, the change of location application. We'd like to move the business from the current location at 421 New State Highway to 600 South Street West. It's a location that offers us twelve thousand square feet, which is more than twice as much space as we have today. It provides considerably better parking and better access for our customers, allow us to offer a much greater depth of product, and just a better shopping experience.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else here on your application?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor of the applicant? Anybody opposed to the applicant? To the board for comment, Mr. McKenna?
Just that we are well aware in the town of Rehnham, your business has been operating for many years and being done in a very capable manner. The change of location, I think the present location you have should be rented very quickly after you leave, because that's also in the town of Rehnham, has a very good location. But I understand what you're saying about more space needed, and that's certainly, in this economy, good news, so I really, I don't think we've had anything of a complaint at all, so.
No, no.
Mrs. Smith?
Which section would you be going to?
If you're looking at the plaza from Route 44, you have a bank of stores on the left with Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is in Staples, and then there's an L after that where, I think it's Sally's Beauty Supply. So, there are two small new businesses going in next to Sally Beauty Supply, and then I would be after that.
Is that the old bank?
It won't quite.
Is that the end?
At the very end?
It won't be to the far right. It'll be, it'll end at probably, it'll leave about four thousand square feet for possibly a bank or somebody else to come.
Oh, okay, okay, very good. I'm pleased with that, I think that's a good location.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think what Mrs. Smith was, might have been getting at is what I was going to ask.
Well, I knew you were going to.
We, there's obviously liquor stores who utilize drive-throughs, and I think that was a concern of mine, and that was a question I was going to ask you, because there is a drive-through there, but the fact that you won't be taking up that space takes care of that question for me.
If, we won't be taking that space, if we did, we would not have a drive-through.
That was the cool idea.
Gee, it took our only question away, thanks a lot.
I think my colleagues spoke for me and were always happy to hear when people want to expand, because that means you're doing good, and were equally pleased to see you wanting to expand in Rehnham, and so I personally wish you the best of luck, and what is the board's pleasure?
It's all be grand, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are approved.
Great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay. The next hearing that the board has is in regards to Old Mill Ponds, 128 White Street, Rehnham, Massachusetts. Do I have a, do I just read this? Okay. The Rehnham Board of Health will conduct a hearing regarding the status of your facility to manufacture, collect, and bottle water and carbonated non-alcoholic beverages for your facility in the town of Rehnham. The hearing is scheduled for June 14th at 7:15 PM at Rehnham Town Hall Selectmen Meeting Room, 558 South Main Street, Rehnham, Mass. Please plan to attend. The hearing is going to be called at 7:36 PM. We apologize to those associated with us for the delay. At this point, Mr. Perry, do you want to take over from there? We're going to go to you, Mr. Perry. We'll go to the representative if he chooses to speak from the Commonwealth, and then, Mr. Leroy, we'll go to you. Again, sir, I don't know your name from the state. All we ask is when you address the board, if you attend to the podium and state your name and title. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Good evening. If I may, Mr. Chairman, in Massachusetts, no person or entity may manufacture a bottle water for human consumption without first obtaining a permit from the local Board of Health of the community where the plant is located. This is your authority under state statute and also the state sanitary code, which happens to be 105 CMR 570. That brings us to tonight's hearing regarding Old Mill Pond Springs, which is also known or does business as American Spring Water. The facility has been operating without a permit from this board since January 1st of 2010. If I may, Mr. Chairman, to just give a little bit of history of why we find ourselves here tonight, and I apologize if I sound elementary, but I think it would be important for the record. Approximately ten years ago, a facility like Old Mill Pond Springs and this particular facility fell under the jurisdiction of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and I believe it did, because it was considered at that time to be a public water supply. And as this board knows, public water supplies are under the jurisdiction of the Massachusetts DEP. About that time, I was notified as a health agent by the DEP that it was declassifying Old Mill Pond Springs as a public water supply and was shifting jurisdiction over to the Rehnham Board of Health and also the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, which is currently, falls under the Food Protection Program Division of that, of the department. The permit is issued annually by the local Board of Health, but through a process of efforts with the State Department of Public Health Food Protection Program. That, and I will take a moment, I know you started to introduce him, Mr. Chairman, Michael Moore is here tonight from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Food Protection Program. Michael is the director of that program, and I really do appreciate that he is attending here tonight to help assist the board in this matter. And I will say at the outset, Mr. Moore is new to that office, so he may not have a, maybe the same full understanding that we may have regarding this particular establishment, but subordinates in his office would. So, again, as part of the annual process, the Board of Health accepts the applications and fees for the bottled water company. Under the statutes, it's really the responsibility of the bottled water company to come to the Board of Health for its annual permit, but Rehnham, what we basically do here in Rehnham is we send out an acknowledgement to all permit holders within this community that your permit is going to expire, you got a certain amount of time to get it in, and we extend that same benefit to the bottled water company. And again, as part of that process, the Old Mill Pond Springs would submit its annual application along with a water analysis for the water, particularly the finished product water, basically the product that will go into the, into the bottles. In 2003, the Board of Health authorized Old Mill Pond Springs per the request of Mr. Leroy, and by the way, Fred Leroy is here tonight representing Old Mill Pond Springs. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you prefer Old Mill or if you prefer American Spring. Okay, I'll say American Spring. So, the American Spring would submit the analysis, but in 2003, the Board of Health authorized Mr. Leroy per his request to a three-year analysis cycle of his source water. The source water being the water, of course, that he would draw from the ground, which would eventually go into the plant to produce the bottled water. So, that is on a three-year cycle. The Board of Health at that time held to an annual testing of the finished water, and that's what we're going to start to talk about tonight. We won't be talking about the source water tonight. Okay. So, at about 2010, no permit was issued, and annually, since this role fell under our jurisdiction, we have worked, along with the State Department of Public Health and Mr. Leroy, of obtaining the goal of having the water analyzed properly by an approved lab submitted to this office, which is in turn submitted to the Department of Public Health's office. And part of the process, again, of that annual process, is we collect the applications, the fees, not only for the town of Rehnham, but we also collect the fee associated with this for the Commonwealth, for the Department of Public Health. We then return and take our fee, and we take the state's fee, we send the state, the fee to the state, along with copies of all of the paperwork that is submitted by the bottled water company. In 2010, no permit was issued by the Board of Health to Old Mill Pond Springs. The last valid day of operation under your sanctioning was December 31st, 2009. And the reason why the permit was not issued in 2010 was that the complete water analysis was not submitted, was not submitted to the Department of Public Health, and in turn, the Department of Public Health could not authorize or allow or give recommendation, I should say, to the town to issue the permit. So, that, again, that brings us here tonight. December 30th of 2010, I notified Mr. Leroy by letter that of this information and that this year, he could be facing, he was operating without a license, basically since, again, January 1st of 2010, and based, and mainly because we had not received all of the paperwork required, again, the water analysis for its finished product. I informed him at that time that we could face a hearing before this board, and also that he could be subject to fines based on the statutes for operating without a permit. Since then, I've had several telephone conversations and in-person conversations with representatives of the Department of Public Health in regards to this matter, as well as Mr. Leroy. That brings us here tonight for discussion, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, but if it's okay, I'd like to stop there.
Sure. I think that would be best. Thank you, Alan. Mr. Moore, if you'd like to add anything, you don't have to in any way, shape, or form, we obviously appreciate you coming out, but if you'd like to add anything from the Commonwealth's perspective, we'd appreciate that.
I'd prefer to ask some questions if you have any.
No, that's, does the board have any questions for Mr. Moore at this time?
I do not.
Okay.
No, just that what you've heard so far, Mr. Moore, falls within the parameters of the Commonwealth of Mass.
Right.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, we might go back to you. Thank you. Mr. Leroy, if you'd like to.
Good evening. My name is Fred Leroy. I live at 128 White Street. I've lived in this town for forty years, and I've owned American Spring Water for thirty years. We've never had a problem with the water, ever. But what has happened in the last few years is a recession we've had, and my company has suffered daily, and these tests are not cheap. I already did some tests that he has. The test that I'm going to have to do now, it will take thirty days, it's going to cost over three thousand dollars. Back-to-back tests for the source water and the finished water cost me over seven thousand dollars. In the last thirty years, I've spent over forty-five thousand dollars testing the same water over and over again, and the test results come back the same, ND, nothing detected. But we ran into trouble this past two years, and there was nothing much I could do. I could not do the test. I am now going to do the test. It'll take thirty days. The water samples have to be done. It also, they can't do it in the state, it has to be sent out of the state, and it takes thirty days, and I'm going to have to do it, there's no way around it. But I want the board to realize, this isn't cheap, this is very, very expensive, and I'd like to somehow get away from some of it. I've updated our faculty to the point that my business, I've spent over twenty thousand dollars. We use reverse osmosis, ozonation, and the, like I say, the testing that we're doing now, that I have to send out, is always coming back with nothing detected, page after page, eight pages, actually. I didn't bring any with me, I'm sure Alan probably has some, but I will get these tests done. It will take thirty days, because that's how long the labs take, and it has to be sent out of the state. There's nothing else I can do. We fell in hard times, like everybody else did, and I just cannot appropriate that kind of money to be throwing out on testing that always comes back exactly the same. I don't know what else I can tell you.
Any questions for Mr. Leroy?
No. Pending the recommendation of Mr. Perry.
I just have a comment to make if I... Mr. Leroy, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your comments about coming back, coming back, coming back, but you know what? There's a lot of people that go to the doctors, and they have tests taken year after year, and nothing is wrong with them, and then they'll go back one year, and bang, they have cancer, they have lung cancer, they have another disease, they have something else. Testing is very important, as far as I am concerned, and as far as I am concerned, that is a minimal cost, a minimal cost.
I agree with you.
As to what the safety of the product that you produce does. So, as far as I'm concerned, sir, I would appreciate that. Get it done.
You're right, and I've been doing it for thirty years, but we fell on hard times, and the money wasn't there.
A lot of people fall on hard times, but you're dealing with the public. You're dealing with the public, and that is a safety issue, as far as I'm concerned.
You're right.
I appreciate, first, Mr. Moore, you joining us from the Commonwealth, and Mr. Leroy, for you and your presentation. I would first agree with Mrs. Smith's comments. We fully recognize many businesses have come before us and have told us about the challenges we face, and while we sympathize, I don't believe it gives us the latitude to reneg on our obligation, not just to you, but to other businesses in the community, and to our constituents, who are technically your constituents and your consumers as well. It appears to me, and first, so you know, this board does have the authority, I believe, Mr. Perry, to completely issue a cease and desist order over that operation. However, it appears to me you might be asking us to give you thirty days, is that what I'm getting from you?
Right.
Okay. And so, I will go, Mr. Perry's approached the microphone again, I will go to him for a minute, Mr. Perry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. The Board of Health does have that authority, again, that's under, that's allowed to you under state statutes, as well as sanitary code regulations. I believe Mrs. Smith is one hundred percent correct, and I've been stating that there is, there's certainly sympathy here for the bad economy, and I think Mr. Leroy and I have had several conversations regarding that, but at the end of the day, the Board of Health could not feel comfortable sanctioning a business to not have as a source of its product proved to be sanitary, you know, and so I absolutely understand Mrs. Smith's comments. I believe Mr. Leroy and I have spoken in the office, and he has stated tonight that he is asking you for thirty days. Considering that this is the first that the board has been able to hear this, I would suggest that it would be prudent, I think it would stay within the spirit of the regulations, if the board did provide Mr. Leroy that thirty days. I think the thirty days would entail not just submitting the sample, but the samples in the, for the analysis, but actually having the analysis back to the Board of Health Office, and the analysis would have to meet the satisfaction of the State Department of Public Health. In other words, we would receive that analysis, Mr. Leroy's lab will produce it, and then we can forward it on to the state for their purview, for their review, and they would be able to have a chance to report back to us that... be able to have a chance to report back to us that it's acceptable and therefore it's sanctioned, so to speak, and go ahead and issue the permit.
Thank you.
So, but I, but I think that that would be an absolute deadline.
I will open up to the board in a minute to see what their opinion is. My personal opinion, I don't mind giving you that 30 days. However, I would say two things. First of all, I hope next year we don't come into this problem again, because, and again, I don't know where my colleagues will be, but I won't be this generous next year. And I certainly hope in 30 days, if this board gives you those 30 days, you're in full compliance, because I won't be this generous in those 30 days either. And I do hope that you having to come before us is indication enough that not only our office, but this board takes that very seriously. And again, I hope you don't have to come back here and have this type of a hearing. We hope that you'll be able to come back, giving if the board agrees with me on this, only to hear good things, that the report did come back, nothing detected. And that would be my preference, but it's up to the board as to what they would like to do.
I would like to, first of all, make sure with Mr. Moore that this is in compliance with the state, that as of this evening, based on where it appears the recommendation for the 30 days is going, is that in keeping with your input at this time, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir, we can work with Alan.
Thank you very much. I also would like to say that I'm not one to repeat, just to repeat, to say it again. So what has been said by Mrs. Smith and Mr. Pacico, I concur 100% with, and I appreciate their input, and with no further discussion to be made on this, if there's no one else out there to have any comment on this, I would make a recommendation that 30 days be granted.
I'll second his nomination.
That would bring us to July 12th. Mr. Buckner, if we want to schedule that for 7:10 PM. And again, Mr. Leroy, we'd appreciate your attendance at that hearing and present us with any findings of those reports. My suggestion to you would be to stay in contact frequently with Mr. Perry. He and I talk on a regular basis, and he can keep myself and the board updated on that. But I think you have your orders from this board as to what we expect from you, and I hope you will take the opportunity we've given you and use it wisely. Any other discussions?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
July 12th at 7:10 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Alan. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We will go back now to the Selectmen's Report. Mr. McKenon, we got one of your items done, but we'll go back to you.
Well, there was only two, Mr. Chairman, and the other one is a little bit, I think, the entire group will be making a statement on, because it is about the debt exclusion vote on the sewer of the southern part of the town of Rainham. The reason I say it may get a group discussion more or less is because we meet today at this time on the 14th, and in our summer schedule, we will not meet again until the 28th. The vote for the debt exclusion is on the 25th, so therefore we will not meet again prior to the vote. So I think that it's in keeping with us to reiterate what Mr. Buckner had presented, that that will be on the 25th, which is a Saturday. It will be from 10 o'clock till 8 o'clock. Some have thought at times maybe reduce the hours, but I think the board will agree that this is a very significant vote, must have a predictable prior hours, which is traditionally in the town of Rainham, from 10 to 8. And because of that, anyone who cares to vote previous to this time, I believe, can vote absentee, but nonetheless, those are the hours, and they are the standard hours in the town of Rainham. In connection with that, I have talked to the Sewer Department, and they are going to have a meeting on Thursday night, and that will be on the, on this vote with the, with Pat Riley's Inside Scoop will be a special evening. It's usually on a Wednesday, this will be a Thursday. So it'll be Thursday evening, and I imagine, generally speaking, that's at 7:00. I didn't get the time, but I think that's what it's going to be. And I'm sure it will be replayed. So if it is played on the 16th, on a Thursday, then I'm sure that our cable committee will make sure that it is played several times over the following week of the 20th, which is the week of the vote. May I say also, Mr. Chairman, in connection with that, I was speaking to Chris Gallagher today, I said, you know, I don't recall ever in my time with the town that the words have been uttered by so many people that this is a vote of honor. This is a vote where the town stands up and votes, I believe, the way it believes that other parts of the town voted over the period of the last 30 to 40 years. The town's been voting expansion under debt exclusions since the beginning of two and a half, it's been voting that way. And each of these districts have voted for the next district someday, and as it comes now, this is the last piece of the puzzle. So when I say it's a sense, a vote of honor, it means that those people in the South who have been voting for over 30 years now for the sewer expansion now have a chance to have their reward, they've been voting for it. And for the citizens that have sewer already, the South voted for you for 30 years. So I think it, it'll, it'll tell a little bit the character of the town. I believe that this should be, I will say that I am for this. I believe it'll be about $100 a year, I think Mr. Gallagher accosted it out to be, a $9 million item for $100 per year per citizens, $25 a quarter, where that's the way we pay our bills. And I think it's a fitting tribute to the Sewer Department for these many years, having nursed this thing along, and it has not been an easy march to complete. Up in the area of Forest Street and Alters Drive, a long time coming, a long time coming. And now finally, we've got the last piece, you know, years ago, we used to say about 495, it is the missing link, we used to call it, and it went to Mansfield, and it took over a decade, if not longer, to get Mansfield to Bridgewater-Rainham Line 24, and that is what has sprung the town of Rainham, Rainham Woods and these other areas, that missing link. And this now will be a vote, I believe, for the missing link, for the last piece of the puzzle to sewer the entire town. Now, for those who say there's a little side street here and a little side street there, the main pipe will go through the main roads, making access to that. And so what we're saying is now, most of the town will be sewed, and for those parts that aren't, there'll be that main pipe which will have access to it. So I just think that people who look at this and say, well, it's the summertime, well, we have one every, every year, we have a summer. And I've checked my calendar, and that is so. So the vote will be on the 25th, from 10 o'clock till 8 o'clock, and I'd appreciate everyone's consideration, whether you're voting for it or against it, and there are those who have legitimate reasons on both sides. I merely have stated my case, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith?
And he so amply has stated his case, and I so amply concur with his case, because it is, it's, it's time. The Sewer Department has done a great job, Chris has gotten all the applications and permits and everything all set. I wholeheartedly support him, his efforts, and the debt exclusion, and I would appreciate two people coming out to vote. Mr. McKenon has said, some are going to vote for it, some are going to vote against, whichever choice you have, vote for it if you can, because it's something that we really promised everybody we would do, and we really should do it, we should. And you can get an absentee ballot if you're going to be running away for a little vacation or whatever, you have plenty of time. On the 25th is the vote time, absentee ballots will probably be available if they're not already done. Are they already done, Randy, do you know?
Not sure.
Not sure yet. Let's give a call to the Town Clerk's Office and get that, and please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Both of you have covered my comments succinctly, and I will be out there voting, and again, hopefully, many of our neighbors will join us on Saturday, the 25th. Correspondence, we have some heavy correspondence tonight. We have the May Activity Report for the Fire Department with a total of 144 calls for service during the month of May. From Michael Hargan, the General Manager of the TMLP, and there's a date from Randy to set a hearing date on a closing here with joint petition of the TMLP in Verizon, New England, covering the proposed location of one new joint pole location, EL 3, to be located on Rogers Way in the town of Rainham. For course of action related, relative to granting, this petition will require a hearing or notice to the others. Mr. Buckner has suggested June 28th.
So moved.
Second?
7:15, Mr. Buckner. Thank you.
From Senator Pacico to the board, I'm writing to inform you of the fact that the Massachusetts Senate has increased statewide appropriation for payments in lieu of taxes, pilot to cities and towns that contain state-owned land. In the FY 2012 Senate Budget, the pilot line item received 2 million more than what was ultimately available to municipalities in the current fiscal year. This provision will amount to a modest increase in pilot monies to cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, and I am proud to have co-sponsored the initiative. Please note that this provision will need approval from the House of Representatives during the conference committee process. I recommend contacting members of the House to urge them to support this. And if we have any questions, to give him a call. Thank the Senator for that. From the Police Department, this is in regards to what we forwarded to the Police Department a few weeks back, the accident traffic data from Mass DOT concerning Route 44 and Orchard Street. The chief is informing us that he anticipates having this completed in July and over to Mass DOT. We have an action alert from the MMA that states that last-minute sound language would weaken the municipal health reform insurance legislation. This is available for the board's perusal and the public's perusal, if you go to the MMA.org website. From Robert Natilla Jr., he is seeking the approval of the board for renting land at 2254 King Philip Street in Rainham. We would like to request to run a pick-your-own-pumpkin patch beginning the last weekend in September and run it every weekend through the end of October, including Monday, Columbus Day for the year 2011. He is asking for quick action on this, and he's rented from us before without incident, Mr. Buckner?
Correct. That's right.
So moved and granted, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That is approved.
From CME Associates in Riviera, CME Associates has been retained by the Mass Department of Transportation Highway Division, Mass DOT, to perform designed services for the proposed replacement of the Route 24 Bridge over the Ton River. The existing bridge was built in 1951. The goal of this is ultimately to increase 24 all up and down the corridor, north end, southbound to three lanes, and they're asking for any input from the board on this, and my personal input would be to go for it. I think it would be a huge boost for the economy in the area and sorely needed, but I would open this up for comment from the board.
I concur, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Do we want to send a letter just of support of this project to the Mass DOT and to CME? All in favor?
If they're motionable.
Thank you.
Second and yes.
All in favor. Thank you. Tag days, we have two tag days for the board's consideration tonight. The first is Elite All-Stars, Sunday, November 6th, and the other one is Kids Kicking Cancer Foundation, and they are looking for the week of June 27th to June 30th, and both seem okay with Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor.
Aye.
That is approved, that concludes correspondence. Press time, we have Mark from the Ton. Does that, Mark, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'm wondering about that hearing about the water bomb, American Spring Water.
Yeah.
I guess what is, what kind of fine would he face? How much money would it be if they didn't give him 30 more days?
I would say, check with Alan, I want to say it was $50 a day, but I can't say definitively. We would...
More, more significant, Mr. Chair, than the fine would be, the point of the license, which would literally stop his business.
Yeah. He would, basic...
That would be...
Yeah. And again, I think that's why we brought him in there, and we've given him 30 days to come into compliance, otherwise, well, you've heard at least my comments on the matter.
With the new precincts, I guess, you guys know the way, the way the town is divided more than I, is there any way someone could explain to me as succinctly as possible what the changes are in the precincts?
It just adds a fourth precinct. We had one and three, which was kind of South Rainham and Rainham Center, and Precinct Two, which was North Rainham and kind of Run 38 Corridor. This just adds a fourth precinct because we increased our population size, and it really cuts up a little bit the previous three, but Precinct Two, just to give everybody the glimpse of it, Precinct Two still is North Rainham. And so Precinct Four, I guess, would capture some of one and three.
A little bit of one and a little bit of three.
Because those were the two, I think, biggest in terms of population growth.
So Precinct Four is part of one, part of three?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
You said that doesn't go in effect to the fall election?
Of 12. So that would, yeah, that would probably, that would be the primary season, which you would have the legislative races, the US Senate race, I believe, would be then, Senator Brown's race, and anything else that might come up at that time.
Is the sewer item the only thing on the special election in June?
Yes, it's a debt exclusion vote for the sewer expansion for $9 million.
That's the only question, Alan.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Seeing no other press time and seeing no community, nor citizen input, any emergency business tonight?
None. Make a motion, sign, adjourn, sign the bills, no business to be conducted afterwards. Second?
All in favor, we are adjourned, and we will return on June 28th. We are off next week. Thank you.